The, uh, Chair comments, one of the first things up, and I'll want to welcome everybody. We've got a nice representation of county, uh, folks with interest in county business here today, and, and so that's good to see. Also, we have a commissioner that's gonna try to join us by Zoom or Skype or by some electronics mean from, from Central America, Commissioner Kreitzer, and, and the signal may be iffy. You got him there yet, Adam? Not yet. Okay. He may join us, so, uh, we will, we'll have to wait and see. So as we move along, our consent agenda, uh, gentlemen, we need to add one item, and that's the approval of the county treasurer's bond. That came to Dory after the publication of our agenda, so a motion to add that to our consent agenda would be appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
And that is also a motion to accept our consent agenda. Would that be correct?
That'd be correct.
All right, that was accepted. Any discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, that passes. And then moving along to the approval of our agenda, we need to add one more, uh, executive session for attorney-client, uh, matters, and we can do that at the end of our meeting when, when everything else is handled, so we don't keep the, the, um, gallery here all day long waiting for meetings. And so if you'd add that to the agenda, and then I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the amended agenda.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
I have a second and no discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, okay. Public comment. This is our opportunity. I see a hand or two. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna pick you guys carefully there. That looks like, we have some members of our planning commission here, and so which one first, or both together, or what are you, okay, welcome. You come to the podium, and please for the record introduce yourselves.
Morning.
Morning.
So I'm Vicky Gurman. This is Lance Rep, Dave Gurman. We're here representing the Southwest Kansas Builders Association.
Oh, we're a different representation. Okay, right ahead.
We're, we're here. We want to personally invite you. We're having a breakfast next Monday morning. Um, I know we got an RSVP from Lon, but wanted to make sure everybody was aware of, uh, the, uh, National Association of Home Builders past board of directors, uh, is gonna, or, uh, chair, chairman of the Board of Directors of National Association of Home Builders will be there to speak. We are honored to have him. He's traveling here from Connecticut. So, and then we will also have a current vice chairman that will be attending, and our state NAHB representative will be there also. So just what, we are very excited. We're honored. Uh, we will be receiving a couple of awards, uh, for growth, uh, but we're just really excited about what they're gonna have to share, uh, with everybody at the, at the breakfast. So wanted to personally invite you.
Okay, Lance, before you leave the podium, for the record and for those out there in, in the land of watching this on Zoom, would you state your name, please?
It's Lance Rep.
Lance Rep. So, okay. We appreciate the invitation. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Having done, keep up the good work. Thank you very much. Okay, any other public comment, anything else that is not included on our agenda? We all got all kinds of paperwork here. Hang on just a minute. Okay. Public business, and we'll move right along, and the planning commission appointment, and Trent, come forward, and is anybody else here to present with you, or, or you, just you? The floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Uh, good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Hope you guys had a great Christmas, great New Year. We do have a few items today for your consideration. The first one, we have the planning commission board application. We have one open position, uh, on that board, and we have Vicky Gurman, who has, uh, served her second term that expired December 31st, uh, 2021. Uh, Ms. Gurman has expressed interest in serving again and seeking a waiver from the governing body. Uh, our second, uh, inquiry to this is Steve Michael has expressed an interest on the planning commission as well as another board. The open appointment is a three-year term set to begin January 1st, 2022, and expired December 31st, 2024. Uh, on your agenda, you've got the attached application for Steve Michael. The alternatives, we have alternative number one, the governing body may approve the waiver and reappoint Vicky Gurman. Alternative number two, the governing body may appoint Steve Michael to the planning commission. Alternative, alternative number three, the governing body may leave a vacancy or vacancies and solicit interest in serving on the planning commission. Staff recommendation is alternative one or two. Um, any questions on this matter?
Your, uh, any comments or questions from the board? Vicky served term limits, but we need, uh, in, in order for her to continue, we'd need a waiver in the record.
Correct. Yep.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, um, with the, uh, upcoming, uh, opening on our, uh, ec, well, I'm, I'm assuming, making an assumption here, that we will have an opening on our Economic Development Corporation Board, uh, come January, uh, or come this month sometime. I guess we are in January. Um, I would, uh, move that we table this decision until we know what that opening might be, because, uh, we might, uh, there might be a possibility for both. Uh, and, uh, so I would, uh, move that we table the decision on this until our meeting on the 18th.
Okay, so second?
I'll second it.
A motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor tabling this, uh, nomination, until January 18th, say aye.
I wouldn't think so.
We have one after that on the 20th.
Your meeting is, is it like the 23rd, 22nd, something like?
Believe January 20th is our next one, so we're still fine on that.
Yeah, so, okay, let's take a, take a, um, vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, okay. So that is tabled. So what else do you have to bring to force?
All right, well, we're gonna go to our next board. This is the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, the Fannie County Board of Zoning Appeals has a five-member board, has two open term positions. The two open appointments are two-year terms set to begin January 1st, 2022, and expire December 31st, 2023. The following citizens, in no particular order, have expressed an interest in serving on the Fannie County Board of Zoning Appeals: Steve Michael, John Fort, and Jason Ryman. Uh, in your agenda, you've got their applications. The alternatives are the governing body may fill the appointments with two of the candidates listed above, and alternative number two, the governing body may leave vacancies and solicit interest in serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Staff recommendation is alternative number one.
I might remind everybody, when we discuss changing the Board of Zoning Appeals number from three to five, the question arose, where are you gonna find anybody to fill those positions? It's great, I'm saying this with gratitude. It's great to see that we have people willing to step forward and offer their names, so appreciate that.
Just a quick.
Table this one, too?
Question to Trent, and I should have asked this, uh, you know, with the first one, uh, what method did we use, or what means did we use to solicit interest in either or both of these, uh, positions?
Uh, as far as, so soliciting would have been done verbally, as well as the city's website. They could go to the city's website and pick the boards in which they have interest to serve on.
Okay, but it was only, and I, I know I asked this one other time in a previous meeting, but it was only on the city's website?
Um.
Was it on the city's website as well?
I'm not sure what on the county's website was listed.
We, I, we read here and interrupt, and I think I can offer just a little bit, Lon, to your question. Jason Ryman, I believe, was one of the people who, who actually indicated interest in several, or at least more than one committee, if you will, at the city level, and it was one of these that, that is at City Hall. Uh, we didn't know over here he was even a, a person with interest, and that, we're gonna someday discuss this again about where county boards' membership ought to be, uh, ought to be filed, but today's not the day. But, uh, I think he was one that indicated an interest, as I recall in looking at, and I may be wrong, like airport board and maybe two or three others, I, I may be off a board, but, uh, John Fort, that was a, a personal contact, you know, he, he was on before, had to step down due to, to a conflict, and went back on. So, um, Steve Michael has, bless his heart, he's been, uh, served on all kinds of boards for the fairgrounds and for extension service and those kind of things, so he's been, been a willing participant, so. Okay, Lon?
Well, now, just, just a quick caveat. I want to make myself clear. I, I'm not disappointed in the names that we have in front of us, but I'm wondering whether we're getting all of the names of interest for these particular positions, or any other positions that might involve county as well as city. Uh, and, and so it's, it's more of a, a global question, if you will, uh, not that I'm disappointed with the, the names that we see in front of us on either of them, uh, but I just don't know that we're getting all of the interest that might be out there in the, in the county.
Now, do you want to table this one, or you want to act on it?
Leave that to the others.
Mr. Chairman, I move we appoint, um, Steve Michael and John Fort to the, uh, zoning board, appeals board.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Steve Michael and John Fort to the zoning board of appeals. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, okay, that passed. So that's one committee filled.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, my last item for you guys today, this is the rezone. Uh, this is FC 2021 dash 46, rezoning from a AAG to the I-3 Heavy Industrial District. The applicants or the owners, uh, J O Cattle Company, Inc., is the owner. The applicant is Garden City Co-op, Inc., slash Jeff Boyd, CEO. Believe we've got some representatives of, uh, for them here today. Uh, the background to this is the applicant, Jeff Boyd, on behalf of Garden City Co-op, Inc., is requesting the rezone. The property generally located at 1503 North IBP Road from AAG to District, um, I-3 Heavy Industrial District. The property is currently vacant, and the applicant plans to build a new grain facility with the transit on the property. Staff analysis, the proposed use of the property as heavy industrial is consistent with the area's general development in the county's I-3 Heavy Industrial District, is the appropriate zoning district for a grain facility with transit within the county. The governing body may make determination and state their findings according to the criteria, and this is a 27.040 as listed below.
Okay, now I believe you have an announcement to make.
Well, I, I just have to recuse myself to vote on it, but I can answer, help answer questions.
Okay, appreciate that, Larry.
With that in mind, go ahead.
Just a little bit more, so this did go to the planning commission. Uh, eight members were present, eight members voted, uh, in favor of this. Uh, governing body may approve the rezoning request, and the governing body may not approve the rezoning request, are the two alternatives. We recommend alternative number one. Um, any questions I ha, that you have for me and/or representatives of the project? You bet.
Okay. Commissioners, anything you need to offer?
I have no questions. I'm pretty well-versed on this issue, so.
Then I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we approve.
Alternative one.
012122?
012022.
22, what Dory said.
And I would second that.
Okay, motion second, and with, with no discussion, I'm assuming. Let's vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes.
All right, thank you.
Bare majority. So thank you, Trent. Thank you, folks in the Co-op, so, um, moving right along.
Bond issue?
Well, yeah, bond issue. Okay, Brett, did I see you come in? You made it just in time. Are you out of breath?
Uh, a little bit, a little bit. I'll make it, though.
Welcome and Happy New Year.
Okay, good morning, County Commissioners. Brett Shogren, Stiefel Nicholas and Company out of Wichita. Uh, to refresh your memory, at a previous meeting, you adopted, uh, a bond sale resolution authorizing Stiefel Nicholas and Company to either underwrite or privately place a bond issue to refund or refinance your Series A 2002 General Obligation Bond Issue, um, currently held by USDA. We sent an RFP, um, to Fannie County banks, um, some provided by Dory, some that we have relationships with. Uh, we did receive a response from the Garden City branch of First National Bank of Syracuse, a very attractive response. Uh, they proposed to purchase, uh, the entire issue at a rate of 2.05%, which lowers that issue from 4.75 to 2.05. Uh, we originally estimated a true interest cost of 2.49%, uh, so we think this is a great result. Uh, I passed around these. I don't know if you had these already, but these should look similar to the estimates. Uh, the original savings estimates were $143,000 in gross savings over the next 20 years, and, uh, with the resultant interest rate, um, we ended up. and, uh, with the resultant interest rate, um, we ended up saving a hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-three cents.
An increase of about forty thousand, is that correct?
Correct, yes. The present value savings, we originally estimated was just under eighteen percent, and ended up being twenty-three point six eight percent. So, uh, basically, this lowered the remaining interest cost of the bond issue from three hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars down to a hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents over the next twenty years. Uh, we did put a call option on the bond issue. The new bond issue is callable June first, twenty thirty-two. So, later down the road, if you have excess revenues, I know this is paid mainly from the water fund, or the sewer district fund, if you have excess revenues, you are able to pay this debt off early, starting in twenty thirty-two. Um, this is slightly a different structure from the original one, the original structure had you make a principal and interest payment annually on six one of each year. Uh, this structure, you'll pay an interest payment on six one and twelve one, you just divide up that payment, and then make a principal payment on six one. So, a little bit, little bit different structure, but, um, that's how it's set up. The next step would be to adopt a bond resolution. Uh, the bond resolution, um, sets forth the results of the sale, the new interest rate, the new structure, and allows the issuance of the bonds. Once adopted, we'll order the bonds printed and have them delivered to the purchaser. We'll submit the transcript to the Attorney General's Office for approval, and the issue is scheduled to close on February first of this year. On that date, First National Bank of Syracuse will wire six hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and thirty-three cents to USDA to pay off that old issue, and the remaining monies will come to the county to pay various issuance slash closing costs. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Have you, uh, um, you're doing a lot of this, aren't you, on refinancing?
Yes, sir.
This is a pretty good competitive rate.
Oh, yeah, yes, it's, it's actually a little better than we expected.
Okay.
As I said, we were estimated two point four nine, um, we, we marketed it non-rated due to the size, and that the, uh, private placement buyer wouldn't, they'd do their own due diligence. Based on that, this, this is a little better proposal than we were even expecting, so we're very pleased with it.
My comment on this proceeding is, much like it's, I take pride in our local citizens stepping forth to volunteer for various committees and so on, I'm pleased to see some local banks, or what I would consider local banks, step forward and wanna be. That's, that's.
Absolutely.
Better than the bank in New York.
Absolutely, and, and we had some others interested, um, they, they called and asked questions, and just, they, they just didn't submit a proposal. Um, like, like I said, back in your meeting in November, twenty years is a little bit long for banks to type their money. So, we were, we were prepared to underwrite the issue if we had to, and market it in the public market, but First National Bank of Syracuse stepped up and said they wanna help.
That's great, we appreciate that.
Absolutely.
All right, gentlemen.
Well, just, uh, Mr. Chairman, just following up with that, Brett, uh, so you said you had several local banks, and this is just informational, 'cause I, I like the two point oh five, but, um, four or five, or local ones, or?
Uh, I think.
How many you?
I think we had two others, um, asked questions.
And then had you taken this out to other banks outside of our area, or you just started there, and when the rate came in the way it did, you stopped?
We, we just advertised it to Fannie County banks, I think I, 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 uh, I got a consensus that you wanted to do that, at least to start out with. So, we advertised to some Fannie County banks, and we gave them a deadline, um, to submit proposals by. And we got one response by that deadline, so, and it was, it was a attractive rate, so we took it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just informational, yeah.
Okay, I think we need a motion to approve a bond.
And this is for the Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero two?
I was hoping I was gonna be the first resolution of the year.
Second. Wait, next time you need to control the agenda.
Uh, yeah.
I, I would move that we approve, uh, said resolution.
Second.
A motion and second, any discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Good work, Brett.
Thank you, congratulations.
All right, thank you.
And then, Mr. Chairman, and I know I asked this question before, but, uh, I've slept through the new year, and I don't remember the answer. Uh, the, uh, the, uh, residents of that district will see a change or won't see a change in what their payments are, uh, or will they, uh, not until at the end of this bond period? How does that work for the residents who are paying the, paying the principal interest?
Uh, you have, uh, two, uh, double structure of revenues coming into that, which is, one, your sewer fees, and two, uh, you have assess taxes on, um.
Right.
on the owners. Uh, this may, uh, affect the assessment, and could possibly, uh, next year reduce that, uh, mill levy for that sewer district, in order to.
On that tax assessment?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, yeah, I, and I do realize we have two, yeah, okay.
So, we'll look at, we'll look at that as we go through the twenty-three budget process.
Okay.
And, um, have to consider all, obviously, in this, uh, particular case, making sure that we have enough there. Uh, this is a GO issue, and, and, uh, you've pledged the full faith and credit of the county to retire that debt.
Yep, okay, thank you.
And Larry, I wanna put you on hold just a minute, we do this to road and bridge, you know, your predecessor, we'd always take a break just as they were due up, and, but I see a, a new smiling face behind a mask, back in the back row by the name of Shruti, and I, I'm gonna ask somebody to go escort her up here, she can't find the way. Come up, come up, please, uh, Kelly, do you wanna come with her? Uh, we need to get her introduced to the community, because this is, whoop, sorry about that.
Just a laptop.
I'm going home for the day.
We're gonna let you have the floor for a minute, and, and Kelly, introduce her, and we'll go from there.
Yep, this is Shruti Chabra, did I say that correctly? Okay, Shruti is the, uh, Health Director, um, for Fannie County Health, and, um, today will be her first day full-time, um, permanent with us.
Boy, we, we welcome you, so now tell us all about what, what your big plans are.
First of all, thank you so much for, uh, for entrusting me with this responsibility. Thank you so much for having faith in me, and, uh, I look forward to giving it my all. I have a medical background and a public health background, and, uh, I'm hoping that I can use that to the advantage for Fannie County. Uh, Fannie County has adopted me as its daughter, and so now I'm just looking forward to working hard with the best team that there is.
We're, we're pleased to have you, would it, would it, I'd be in trouble if I mentioned that you have a husband who happens to be on staff at the Community College, and, and you're, you're a, a Garden City hometown.
Yes.
Person there, so.
Absolutely, I'm, I'm really proud, he, uh, he's teaching philosophy, he starts this semester, so if anybody is interested in learning philosophy, go sign up. And, and, uh, and my, um, his family lives here, so we hope that we can make a home here in Garden City, and, and work here to improve the city for the community.
Now, I'm gonna invite the community to stop in and get acquainted with you, and also, uh, invite them to invite you to clubs and events and whatnot, so you, maybe you can get to know the community a little better in your new capacity, but we appreciate the fact that you're there, so.
Thank you so much.
Any other, the commissioners, have anything?
Other than just welcome to Fannie County, um, we needed somebody in the position very badly, um, through this pandemic and all the things that have been challenging us, um, I hope you're ready to go to work.
I am, thank you so much, it's, it's an honor.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, Kelly.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, now, Larry, I've, do we need to take a break before Larry's presentation, or we will? Yeah, there we go, the floor is yours, sir.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, this morning, I'm asking for approval for a patch truck chassis change. In May of twenty twenty-one, the Board of County Commissioners approved the purchase of a new patch truck to include a Peterbilt chassis and an asphalt box. Public Works was notified, uh, that the Peterbilt truck chassis that was bid for the project is no longer available. A substitute truck chassis has been identified and located with two options being proposed. Uh, both options have the same specifications as the Peterbilt chassis, um, other than they're both internationals. Option number one is a twenty twenty-three international model MVs, uh, MV six zero seven. Uh, this is from, uh, Rush, Rush Truck Centers of Utah. Uh, truck, the cost is ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-four cents. Uh, that is an increase over the Peterbilt of fifteen thousand, four hundred and two dollars, uh, with a delivery date of the fourth quarter of two, uh, twenty twenty-three. Our option number two is also an international model HV six zero seven, this is a twenty twenty-four. This is from Dodge City International with a cost of ninety-one thousand, three hundred dollars, it's an increase of nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars over the Peterbilt. Both option, uh, both option costs include the cost of delivery, the cost of the box has not changed, so Burkamp will stay the same, there's no, uh, surcharges or anything, their cost of the box will continue to be the same. Uh, the original price of the patch truck, uh, combined was two, two hundred and seventeen thousand, thirty dollars and seventy cents. Uh, the al, the alternatives, the alternatives are to reject the first proposal and rebid the entire purchase. The second option is to accept the proposed international chassis. Uh, the recommendations from the Public Works is to go with option number two with an increase of nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and an anticipated delivery date of the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. That truck goes, it has a time slot to go in for, uh, assembly, uh, quarter one or two of twenty twenty-three, actually. We feel the anticipated delivery date will, uh, have a negligible, negligible impact on the county operations, a, um, and identified and stated earlier, an option two is an increase of ninety-one eighty-five that would be paid from the equipment reserve, and would not affect operating budgets. Estimated new total for the patch truck is two hundred, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy cents.
I have a couple of questions for you, Larry.
Yes.
What, why would a tw- twenty-four model of a truck with the same, uh, characteristics be, what, nine thousand dollars less money than the twenty twenty-three?
Well, it is actually.
Are they the same?
Five thousand dollars difference, I don't, I do not know, yeah. I do not know what the, the difference in the bid price is far as, but that, you know, that is what we have on the spec sheets, is the truck from Dodge City is actually a twenty twenty, twenty-four, the truck from Rush Center, Rush Truck Centers of Utah is a twenty twenty-three.
It's just.
So, those are the, the specs that I received, anyway.
My concern, uh, I think you can, uh, can understand where I'm coming from, you drive by any of our new car dealerships in town, and they got vacant lots.
Right.
And cannot get stock. Or is this gonna be available, or are you ordering something that, that gets canceled down the road? I mean, we don't, we can't answer that today.
Right, and Burkamp did tell us that these, they were the two trucks that were available, and then with the time slot that, that they could get to them. Uh, she couldn't find anything else, absolutely no Peterbilts, uh, she looked, uh, dealers all over, different brands. Uh, she was in contact with me and our shop supervisor to check with, see if certain brands or, uh, different specifications would work, and these are the two that she was able to come up with at this time.
And then, Larry, I have one final question, is this being purchased through the, I'm, I'm trying to think of the name of the, of the?
Sourcewell, this is a Sourcewell, yes.
Sourcewell, yeah.
Yeah, this is Sourcewell, yes.
So, it's already been, been through the advertising, the?
Yes.
All of the legal stuff, so, okay, thank you, now, any other board members?
Couple of questions, Larry.
Yeah.
Is this a cash upfront deal, or cash on delivery, when, do you have to pay for this thing in advance?
I do not believe so, uh, we, we, you know, the Peterbilt, the patch truck that was, uh, ordered last year has not been, has not been paid for, so I thought, you know, it was on delivery, I believe.
Commissioner, if I may, uh, normally when they put it in production, they may ask for fifty percent of the chassis cost of it, and as you can tell, we're actually about two years out on this thing.
Yeah. Uh, second question, it's an observation, uh, fifty-gallon fuel tank, that's only about two hundred and fifty mile radius, does that fit your needs? Or is that pretty short, doesn't sound like much of a fuel supply in that thing?
Doesn't, no, it does not, um, on a patch truck, uh, that would, that would be about the only thing we would use that for, you know, it's be just a single-use truck on patching, so, uh, I did not notice that, but yeah, that would be kind of a small fuel supply. No, no, it's not. Something, okay, yeah.
If you could get a second one on that thing, that'd be better, just my thoughts.
Right, yep.
My trucks get five mile a gallon, I bet you this is not gonna be a whole lot better.
Right, yeah, they're both spec with the three fifty Cummins and an Allison automatic, so.
No problems with that, but, just an observation you might think about.
Right.
Anything else?
Two-year delay won't, um, impede your operations?
We have a patch truck, it's, uh, pretty sad shape, I mean, but we do have a patch truck. It, it has definitely been, been needing to replace it, but, uh, we do have one, it's not like we don't have one right now. Um, I think, um, really just kinda going off of our options, 'cause we had Sarah with Burkamp searching for another truck for us, and she has worked, worked hard and searched all over looking for a truck, she even asked about if we had a, um, a truck that we owned already that we could just put the box on, but we kinda would hate to do that, a lot of our trucks are getting high in mileage as well, and, and so, um, you know, it's just kind of a limited supply of trucks right now. So, I feel like our options are very, very minimal.
Okay.
I move, Mr. Chairman, that we go ahead with the, um, bid from, um, Dodge City International.
The twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, the, on the twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, yep.
Two years don't seem to impede him too much.
I would second that, but I'd encourage you to see if you can get a.
Yeah, right. Yep, we will, I'll look into that.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You can order a trash truck, or a patch truck.
Patch truck, okay, thank you, sir.
There's a difference.
Yeah, there is a difference, okay. Before we move into all of the big figures here, do we have, we have a couple young ladies sitting in the audience, are they here for business, or?
No, we're just here to, for your interest.
Okay, that's great, so. Get Commissioner Fishney back, and, and we'll turn this over to our county administrator, 'cause we're gonna talk money. All right.
All right, so we have, uh, some year-end transfers for your consideration. What we've done is we've gone through your, uh, budget, um, over the last few months, and uh, estimated and anticipated what, uh, some of the remaining balances would be and so forth. As we talked during the twenty-two budgeting process, and actually in the twenty-one budgeting process, uh, we talked about the beginning of, um, a, a little bit more, um, robust, if you will, uh, planning aspect for equipment and building reserves, and that's what you see before you today. Uh, with, with the exception of, uh, the employee benefit fund, and as, and as you recall, I've provided some updates throughout the year on, um, what the status of that fund was going to be, and, and my concern for it. So, without, uh, further hesitation here, we, we have some transfers before you, and I can just briefly go through the, through them, there's approximately twelve to fifteen of them. We have the registered deeds transfer for equipment purposes, um, of three thousand dollars, and once again, this is coming from her department. Um, general fund, uh, buildings and grounds, ninety-one thousand, uh, this is going into the equipment reserve as well. General fund IT transfer, equipment reserve, a hundred thousand, uh, another buildings and ground to CIP. Keep in mind that CIP is for facilities, for the facilities. The election, uh, department will be transferring twenty-five. The Election Department will be transferring twenty-five thousand. And the next one here is your transfer from the General Fund into Employee Benefit. And that's one point two million dollars.
We've been hit there pretty hard.
Correct, you, you've had some, some extreme experience in your employee benefit department and we're just shoring that up for the, actually the twenty-three budget.
Yeah, I make a quick point here.
Absolutely.
The county health insurance system, while administered by Blue Cross Blue Shield, actually we insure ourselves.
That is correct.
That's what this is for those out in, in viewing public wanting to know what's going on. These are actually the costs of doing business as a health provider.
The one following that is from General and Classified into the Health Department. That's a scheduled transfer. We have a couple of transfers from Road and Bridge, one to the Special Highway of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I will point out that it was initially budgeted that we would transfer approximately two hundred thousand. We found some efficiencies and so forth, and so we'll be transferring six hundred and fifty thousand into Special Highway. Same holds true into your Special Equipment Fund. I believe we had about a hundred and fifty scheduled, but we, we do have some efficiencies there, so we'll be transferring five hundred thousand into the Road and Bridge. You will have a couple of resolutions. I believe Dory has those resolutions that will need to be passed in conjunction with this trans, for those two transfers. EMS Equipment Transfer of two hundred thousand dollars. Remember, in the twenty-two budget, we set up a schedule for vehicle replacement and that will, that in essence is for, for that particularly. And then you have another thirty thousand for various other equipment, EMS equipments as being transferred from EMS into the Equipment Reserve Fund. The Fair.
Is that a typo? I don't mean to interrupt, but ambulance, that thirty thousand says ambulance and emergency management, so help me understand.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, that, that's actually for, for emergency management, I'm sorry, instead of ambulance, yes. That fund, the ambulance, ambulance fund has two departments, one's EMS and one is E-Management. So I misspoke there. Fair is transferring a hundred thousand for equipment. We'll come back to you with a request for approval on a tractor for the fairgrounds. We've solicited some bids. We had to throw those out because of an addendum that did not make it to all of the bidders. So we'll go through that bidding process once again then. GIS transferring thirty-five thousand for equipment, noxious weed to Special CIP for ten thousand. Law Enforcement, County Attorney, a hundred thousand for CIP. And then Equipment Reserve for the Attorney's Office of a hundred and seventy-five. Law Enforcement, the Sheriff's Department, a hundred and twenty-five for equipment. Landfill, this is going to the General Fund. This is a scheduled transfer of two hundred thousand dollars. And then your CSC Building. You have twenty-six thousand going to the CIP and then four thousand, four hundred into equipment. Total transfers today is just under three point eight million dollars. So I have handed out a hard copy of that. It's my recommendation to the board that they consider these transfers favorably. And that is it, subject to your questions.
You in your position to make that recommendation?
Correct.
And we have a series, more than one resolution, do we not? So we'll turn the floor to Dory for a moment.
Resolution oh three, twenty twenty-two is the transfer for noxious weed.
Okay, so let's act on these as we go through them. Dory, if you don't mind, so I would
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve resolution oh three, twenty twenty-two, noxious weed transfer.
Okay.
Second.
You have a second and any discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The next resolution is oh four, twenty twenty-two, and this is the transfer from Road and Bridge to Finney County Special Highway Equipment Fund.
Okay.
That's in the amount of five hundred thousand.
Entertainer motion?
Move we approve said motion, uh, resolution?
And I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye. Doing well, Dory?
The last resolution for transfers is oh five, twenty twenty-two. This transfers monies from Road and Bridge to the Finney County Special Highway Fund, and that's in the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And entertain a motion?
And, and I would again move that we approve said resolution.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye, aye. Okay, does that take care of the moving the money?
We'll need a formal motion to approve the remainder of the transfers and the chairman's signature on that document.
Okay, so.
So move?
Second.
Motion and second for whatever Robert said. You got that, Dory?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Your, your motion and second's been heard. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye. Okay. Now, are we caught up for this little bit?
Yes, we are.
Okay, and I think about next is going to be the executive sessions, right? Okay, well.
But, Mr. Chairman, I, I would suggest we might want to take a five or ten
Yeah, that's what I'm getting, you're, you're reading my mind.
Well, so that we can get these signatures completed.
Let's take a ten-minute break and this is, you know, we're going to dedicate this to Commissioner Dris. We're doing it a little bit early. There you go.
And he's appreciated.
Back back on and, and if we're ready to resume our meeting, our break time's over. And according to my agenda, it is time for our county administrators' report.
All right, yes, just a few updates for you is that I'll be reviewing a, a developer's agreement with, for the housing development for Country Acres that Linda has crafted. That will be before you on the 18th for your consideration. Reviewing the sewer consulting agreement with SMH, Sloane, Meyer and Hancock. And that is, as you recall, for the, planning for the upgrades of those three sewer districts. Working on, I'll be renewing our, oh, our federal requirement for actually updating that for grants and federal payments. We'll be doing that this week. We have a farmland road project update on Wednesday, Wednesday afternoon. And then need to look at the consulting agreement for engineering services with Sloane, Meyer and Hancock. We do need engineer to sign off on dedication of infrastructure in these developments.
And we have somebody in mind there to sign off? Do we have an agreement?
That's one of the agreements that, that I'll be reviewing, yes, yeah. January 18th, of course, is the next commission meeting. I am scheduling a work session for the commission on that date. A couple of the topics that I'd like the commission to begin working through is the, one is the ARPA funds, where you're going to, where you are, what's your preference on where you're wanting to go with those? The second one has to do with some pre-planning for the ambulance EMS facility since we have all that property now, the health department EMS facility.
We got that other piece?
Say again, yes, yes. So we have all that ready. And once again, that project is tied to your sales tax review that you had last summer. Then any other topics that, that the commission want included on that? But we'll have the department heads at this, at this work session as well. My assumption is that we would just take a break from your regularly scheduled session and then go into work session with the, with the department heads as well. And-
Also our reorganization day.
That is, yes, yeah.
Put Lon in charge and then let him run the-
There we go.
We're making a big assumption.
Yeah.
Real job, buddy. Big stopwatch.
So, so are there any other topics besides those two right off the bat that you want to discuss? Because we'll have some other things.
I'd like to discuss the, have Matt system over across the street. What, what's the plan on how do we start and what do we do there?
On the, okay.
That's, that's an elephant that's been in front of us a while. We need to talk about that.
And I want to throw out something, Robert, that we've, I've mentioned before, and the next meeting will be maybe the, be a kind of an appropriate time to start. But we need, along with this health department EMS facility, we need to somehow capture the vision of the community. And to do that, I have mentioned, we need to hire an artist, architect. I don't know who we hired, but, but I have been impressed with, with visiting with an architect, what their software will do when you start putting in, okay, I need so many square meters for this office, so on, so on. And that sort of, that computer program starts building a structure.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're about not far away from needing to take a look and painting a vision, so.
Okay, very good.
Anything else? None?
Might that be a good time to discuss the planning commission and commissions, how we fill those vacancies?
Yeah. I'm not going to win that argument with our legal counsel, but I'm going to still argue.
I think we can establish a, a process or a policy.
Well, to me, we have a human resource department here that could surely handle, somebody could, the county clerk, county administrator.
We're saving that for the work session, Dave.
Okay. Put that down there, please, real. We'll have a long work session. You want to be here, Vicki, and referee?
All right.
Okay.
All right, so-
Want to start a county newspaper, Dave?
Yeah, why not?
All right, so we'll go ahead and get that planned.
Got somebody who would do that.
We'll go ahead and get that planned then for the 18th. I would anticipate that we'd break into that late morning. Through lunch, we'll go ahead and have lunch brought in and so forth.
Sound like a deal.
All right.
Better not plan a hog hunt, huh?
Now, leave your combine in the shed for that day, will you? Anything else, Robert?
That is it.
Linda, let's have a county councilor's report.
Well, Commissioner, as you know, we signed off on those deeds last week for the Eighth Street, not the Eighth Street, the Mary Street, West Mary Street property and the Burnside Drive. So those have closed and sold, no longer the county's property. Continuing to work and get ready for Country Acres, which will be on the agenda for the 18th, the development agreement and whatnot. And I believe that's all I have to report at this point.
And again, our, our condolences on the loss that you had is-
Thank you.
Regardless, so.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thoughts are with you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Around the table. Larry?
Nothing to report, just want to wish everybody a happy new year and Merry Christmas and looking forward to '22.
Well, that was sweet and concise.
Sweeter, ditto.
Got your stopwatch ready for here so you can clock Lon.
Didn't even have time to plug it in.
Go ahead, Duane.
Well said, Larry, I appreciate it, same, same sentiments. Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year.
And I would echo that, but also I don't have any meetings to report, but the month of January is pretty busy, starting with this week on a vote for KAC, KAC and chamber things in Topeka mid, late January. Lot of, and I do plan to attend that home builders breakfast next Monday. So a lot of, lot of things happening in the month of January related to county and chamber business. But I would add also, we need to hold in prayer the people with, in Kentucky and different places that went through the tornadoes, people in Colorado that were devastated and the people in Kansas that were devastated by the fires on our wind day. There's a lot of folks who are without homes, without, without their livestock, you know, a lot of different things going on around us. We have to understand how blessed we are compared to all the things that are happening around us. But we need to keep all of those people, whether it be emergency responders or whether it be the people who were affected.
Yeah, that's it? I, I don't have much to report. Finner County Committee on Aging had their regular meeting and, and I attended that. And this may be or may not be something to put on our workstation, but we continue to have questions with those outlying county buildings about maintenance on them and who, who's in charge and, and so on. So if we had time, this isn't the most critical issue, but, but we treat the library different than we do the senior center, it is different than the fairgrounds and so on. And at some point, I would like see us discuss that and see if there's a more common fix. Then Robert and I attended an interesting meeting, what I call a hot wash, after the fact meeting over emergency management after the real windy, gusty day with a bunch of city folks and, and it was, it's always good to bring folks together and what went well and what maybe can be fixed a little better. And that was a profitable meeting. And then Linda and I had, had a meeting at the title office to close a couple pieces of property and, and I'm assuming that she deposited the checks. Does anybody, has anybody checked to find out? She had the money, so anyway, that's about all I have to report and wish everybody a Happy New Year. I had a kind of a blessed new year. My, my, two of my three grandkids, who actually their parents reside in Jacksonville, Florida, but, but my middle grandson, who is a sophomore at the University of Colorado, purchased with the help of Santa Claus, a car. And he had to drive that from Jacksonville trying to get it to Boulder. And so my, my granddaughter, who is a, is a freshman at Central Florida University, she got in the car with him and they piloted that first day to Little Rock. Second day, they made it to Garden City. And so we had a nice visit and then I took, took Sadie, the granddaughter, out Saturday afternoon, put her on the airplane and sent her back to Jacksonville. And so I, I had an enjoyable weekend with, with family, so. With that said, it is time for executive sessions, and I'm going to propose that we turn these around, that we have the, the one with Linda first. And so we need, I don't know how much time, to discuss some legal matters, but we need the board, we need Robert, we need, of course, Linda, and we need, we need Kelly, right? We need her human resource person, so. A motion and a set of time, what, 20 minutes, 25 minutes, 30 minutes?
Ten.
Let's go 15, just, let's go, we'll, 15 minutes for, with executive session with our attorney.
So moved. Second.
And any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. And we'll be back here about five minutes till the hour, so.
Well, let's get him back here and see. We're back in session with no action taken in executive session and waiting just a moment here for our county administrator. Mr. County Administrator, how much time would you like in your executive session? Thirty minutes and just the board and you? Okay.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second. You have a motion second. Thirty minute executive session with the board and our county administrator and that
We are back in session and no action was taken in the executive session. So is there anything else to come before this body before we adjourn?
And that's the officer switch.
Yeah, we do all of that on the eighteenth and find a... I'm sorry, if... Okay, anything else? If not, until eight thirty on the eighteenth, we stand adjourned.